This meeting was originally scheduled for October, February 13th, 2025, but was rescheduled to February 18th, 2025 due to inclement weather. This meeting will now occur on February 18th. It is 16:09. We're going to have the Frederick County School Board Budget Work Session, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I see we have an agenda before us. I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. I'll turn it over to Dr. Hummer.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. We have added this item on about two years ago, so we can give the full board an opportunity to discuss the full budget before you all adopt the budget this evening. So I am going to go ahead and provide a timeline, and then I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. Anderson and her team to go through the next steps of the budget process and where we currently are. So if you can go to the next slide, Mrs. Anderson, so I can go through an update of where we currently are with our budget timeline. So we already had a couple finance committee meetings, and out of those committee meetings, we've had a lot of questions. We also had some requests to make some adjustments, which we are going to go through today. We did have our public hearing on February 4th. We appreciate the public coming out and sharing some of their feedback and input, as well as we've been receiving input and questions along the way, and we've been answering those questions. We also had a joint work session last week, which I thought went very well. Appreciate the opportunity to work with our Board of Supervisors in regards to questions of our budget, because they are a funding body of ours. The majority of the dollars we do get from the state, but we do get the second-largest portion from the county. So I was appreciative of their questions. We are currently working through their follow-up questions that they asked, that it was just on Thursday, and as I mentioned to you all, we will get that to you as well as with them at the same time. So we'll work through that as we continue to work through this process. And then, of course, we have our budget work session that we have updated and meeting today. And what we're going to do is, after we have a conversation here today, there's no action out of this meeting, but based on what you all decide and what you all discuss, we will then make adjustments to the presentation for this evening, which I will be presenting to you all before you actually adopt that budget. And then we'll have follow-up conversations with our Board of Supervisors in March. Hopefully, they will decide on what the budget's going to look like for the county, which includes us in April. And then, once that is decided, you all will then approve the budget in April. And at that time, you'll also be able to make adjustments and changes. So based on the additional dollars that hopefully we get from the state, and we might see that adjustment countered with the county, we'll be able to make a decision in regards to what we're going to move forward with as a school division to meet the needs of our students. So with that, I'm now going to hand it over to Mrs. Anderson, who's going to dive into this. And please, this is a work session, so please chime in and ask questions as we move throughout. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sorry. Our county bus out of Frederick County.
I'll get my homework.
Oh, by the way.
Oh, nice. Nice. Okay. So, as Dr. Hummer said, we've had a couple of budget work sessions, which we heard from you as we were moving through the details of the budget proposal, of some of your recommended changes to the superintendent's budget proposal. The first that we heard was shifting the teacher pay scale on clustering to earlier in the scale at five years' experience, as opposed to what we were originally proposing at around 16 years of experience.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
And since it's a work session, I'm sorry, I don't typically interrupt this much. Was this the scenario A, D, and E, whatever the respective letters were?
That is correct.
My understanding was that that was a point of discussion, but we hadn't taken the temperature of the board to see which of those two clusters, or even perhaps both, we wanted to move forward with.
And that's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing here.
Yeah.
So is what we're going to see substituting one for the other, or there...
You'll see that as we get to that point of the presentation. Yep.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Dr. Urson, that is a great question. So keep in mind, nothing has been finalized. So that is why we're having this discussion here today. Typically, these conversations were happening through the finance committee meeting, and as you all make those suggestions and recommendations for changes, we wanted to give the full board the opportunity to work through these things. And then, based on the consensus, that is what we'll add into the presentation for this evening. We do not like to have this meeting on the same day of our board meeting, but because of the snow and getting this in on time, that's why it's today. So this is an anomaly for us to have it on the same day, so.
And another thing, while we have you off track, I'll just keep you off track here for a moment.
All good.
So after, I had the opportunity to sit down and have one-on-ones with several members of the Board of Supervisors, and got a lot of their insights, heard a lot of their concerns, did a lot of my own research. And as you all are learning about me, I make slow, methodical changes, because those are the ones that stick. And I like to have all my information before I bring something to your attention. So, all of those disclaimers being said, this is going to be rather untimely, since you want us to approve this tonight, Dr. Hummer. But two things that have come up that I've done my research on, that I feel like we can sunset and save money in our budget for next year, is our contribution to pre-K, and then also the CEP for the nine current facilities that we have. And I know, Mr. Bell, I know this is a soft spot for you, but our local cost index is going up. We're becoming a richer community. So if we could sunset those programs by my rough back-of-the-napkin estimate, it would save me approximately $2 million out of this budget for this year. So if we could get some more solid numbers on that, because that's just my math, but those are two things that I'd like to be considered, too.
So to get some more information around sunsetting the CEP program for the nine schools, it's going to take us a bit more time to see exactly what that savings would be.
Okay.
The VPI one is easier to get to than the CEP schools.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you.
But we'll definitely follow up with an answer. It just may not be by this evening's meeting.
Okay.
Yes. Quick turnaround.
Yeah, it's a quick turn.
It's a very quick turnaround.
So, yeah, probably not going to be able to say yes to that tonight.
I mean, again, it would be up to the board to make that decision, and we would take a look at what that's going to look like if the board wants to postpone that. I would advise that we don't postpone it for very much longer, because we have to get those numbers downtown, because we have to stay within that timeline. So I would advise that we have a special-called meeting next week, if that's the desire of the board. That's something that we can do. Absolutely.
Sounds good.
I agree.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I can't express how much I disagree with that in any amount of time that we possibly could have. Regardless of how wealthy our community's getting, we still have a disparity of wealth, as we always have had in this area since I've been here. We have a larger population of ELL students coming into our schools, and unfortunately, a lot of those ELL students are also falling into the category of requiring free or reduced lunches. Now, I understand that there are programs out there, but those programs don't affect or help every single student. In point of fact, I would still request that we fund all of our schools. I realize that many of you on the board here don't believe that feeding our children is the requirement or desire of our schools, or necessary for our schools, but I disagree. I believe that nutrition and learning go hand-in-hand, and having a full belly and being able to conduct themselves in a school setting go hand-in-hand. I disagree vehemently with Supervisor Dunn. I disagree with removing the nine schools that we have. If anything, we should increase to 10, 11, 12 schools. There's still a great need, and if you don't believe me, if you think I'm making this up, you need only go to, and I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared for this unfortunate item on this, but what is the place where students and parents can go get food?
Bright Futures.
Bright Futures. Go to Bright Futures. Talk to them. There isn't an uptick in wealth in our community. It's really more of a downsized. Yeah, we're getting more people from Loudon and from Fairfax, but we're also still getting a large number of people in our community who can't afford to pay for a full lunch or breakfast for their students. And we have students that are not eating on the weekends, and they rely on getting a lunch at our schools to have any type of meal. So before we jump hastily into removing something that's $2 million, and I'm not saying that's a small number, but in the grand scheme of things, with regards to other parts of our budget, it certainly is. I'd rather scale back the number of buses we get before I scale back any of food we provide for our students. And there are certainly other places we can save. As far as pre-K, I still, I'm on the fence about that. There are studies that show both positives and no change at all, as far as benefits to the students. But my goal focus right now is, let's please really think long and hard before we remove the food from these students in these nine schools. Go to Bright Futures. Talk to them. Talk to the county. You'll find out how many people in this county require that kind of sustenance. Thank you.
So just to clarify, not asking to do away with the free and reduced lunch program, that definitely fills the gap and fills the need. Just the CEP, they're two different things. So CEP, not free and reduced.
Mr. Chair.
No, the CEP is a free lunch. Is that not correct?
So there's a free and reduced lunch program that's federally funded?
Right, and I'm not saying, and I'm, yeah, and what I'm saying...
CEP pays for everybody's lunches for free. Rich kids, poor kids, everybody.
Correct, and I'm not confused about it. I know what I'm talking about. CEP is what I'm talking about. The free and reduced lunch program is a federal program, and that will continue. And what I'm saying is, that doesn't reach every single student or family that needs it, whereas our CEP does. And I promise you that not all students who are having that benefit are taking advantage of it, because their parents can't afford to pay for the lunch, so.
Mr. Chair. So I'm hearing both sides of it, and I don't want anybody to go hungry, right? But we've talked about this before, where it would get absorbed in the debt service fund. Anything that went over, we're not going to take any food out of any child's mouth. We won't let anybody go hungry. There are programs such as Bright Futures, such as free and reduced lunch on the federal program. I think we can't have it both ways. You know, we talk about increasing the budget all the time, because we have money in the community, but then we're saying we don't have money in the community, so everybody needs a free lunch. It's a sticking point for me, where either we have the money or we don't have the money, then we can adjust from there. But, you know, we keep saying that this community has the money, so can they pay for their own lunches? I don't want to take food out of anybody's mouth, but I think everybody should pay their fair share if they can't afford it. If they can't afford it, then we do have those federal programs that don't come out of local taxpayer dollars. But at the same time, you know, how do we scale that back? I would just like to see how the process looks before we make that decision.
And we're not taking food out of kids' mouths.
Exactly.
We're feeding them. It's in the debt service fund. We have that.
Nobody goes hungry.
No one goes hungry.
Just to satisfy my curiosity.
Yes, sir.
I have not heard the status of the legislation that was put forward by, I think it was Senator Rome. Has that, on the free breakfasts?
Yeah, so essentially, what happened is, is they met, they got together, and they had conversations of what this was going to look like, and essentially, what it's going to come down to is money, which is the exact same conversation that we're going to have.
So it's still...
So it's still waiting there in regards to how it's going to fade. Right now, what is on the docket is free breakfast for all students, but again, we don't know what that's going to look like. Is it going to be a match? Is it going to be total cost? And also, just for point of clarification, too, recall that just two years ago, all nine of those schools met the criteria at that time, which was 25% or more of that percentage. And they increased that to 40%, so we meet that as a school division. So that's why we made that request last year to increase all of our schools, so we do meet that as a school division. But we can find out exactly how much that costs for the nine schools in the operating, and we can get that number to you all to make a decision.
Sure. And to be fair, I don't think that the school system is purposefully taking food out of students' mouths. I just don't think that the students who require this are standing up for themselves well enough, or their parents, to actually take advantage of it. You know, when you're told that the school lunch is this amount of money, and you don't have that money, you're not going to go in and try to sneak a lunch or breakfast. You're just not going to do it. And that's why my daughter, actually, we pack an extra lunch and some extra food for a student that's a friend of my daughter's, because her family doesn't have the means to purchase this. And this is just one example. There's plenty more, but doesn't have the means and isn't going to go and walk through the line and just not pay. It's just not happening. I mean, you can say as much as you want, we're not going to take food out of their mouths, but if we remove these nine schools from the CEP, that's exactly what we're going to do.
Can I just ask a...
Go ahead. Am I wrong in saying this? When we go, when a student goes to the line to get lunch, they have their card, right? Or they pop in a number.
They put in a number.
So you don't know who's paying and who's not.
Exactly. Yeah.
Well, so I mean... It's irrelevant. The students aren't going in there to do that, whether they have the money on their card or not.
So I don't see a sticking point.
Because if they go and they don't have money on their card, yes, the lunch lady's going to let them pass through, but not all of the students are doing that.
The parents have the money on the card, so the students wouldn't know yes or no if the money's on the...
Sure they would.
The experience through the lunch line is the same.
My kids know exactly how much they have on their card, because they always come to me and ask me to add more money to it. And maybe I'm just different than all of the other parents in the entire county, but my kids know, and I guarantee the other kids do.
But do, so do, just not saying anything about the kids or anything, but like, do other students know how much money's on your kid's card?
No.
Exactly.
No. But I get what you're saying. That's still not changing the fact that they're not going through.
Well, what I'm looking at is numbers. So our local cost index is going up. We're becoming a more wealthy community. We are coming to the Board of Supervisors with a significant increase in our request for operating funding, and we have just, they have just approved, thankfully, a fourth high school and two expansions. We need to be fiscally conscious of what we're asking for, and we need to be able to cut, even if it's only $2.1 million, I think is what the cost of CEP was quoted to me last year, as, if it's only that much money, that's still $2.1 million.
Oh, I'm not arguing that it's a lot of money. I think it is.
And our focus should be, we have, the big issues that I see that we need to battle, our teacher salaries and retainment of those teachers.
Sure.
And then, what keeps me awake at night is staffing that fourth high school. We have to make this county attractive to teachers, so that we can get good-quality teachers to come here and teach in that fourth high school, as well as our other schools. Because right now, Ms. Frakely, what is it, 45 vacancies still? Okay. We still have 45 vacancies, and we're asking the Board of Supervisors for another approximately 40, I think, in this budget cycle. So that is the big, that is, the alligator closest to our boat is staffing our schools. And we need to, we needed to decluster these pay scales. We need to get incentive-based pay in, which I know that's on the horizon for next year, performance-based pay, rather. Like, there are things that we need to do to move the needle forward, to be in compliance with the new accountability standards, and having that fourth high school ready to go. And we need to look at cost-cutting in any way we can. And that's why I bring these up.
I agree with you 100% that those are the big, big magillas in our budget that we need to worry about. 100%. I'm saying, let's not take it away from the CEP. Pre-K, I'm not sure. I don't have skin in that game. I'd have to do research to see, more research to see, but I think there are other places that we can pull from, and I don't know of any off the top of my head, but I'm going to start looking. I just think that CEP should not be considered low-hanging fruit, just because it's unpopular politically.
It's not political.
Sure it is. It's extremely political.
No, it's not. Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt anybody. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding the lay of the land, and I apologize if this was said already. Are we getting pushback from our colleagues downtown, saying that our budget is problematic with the CEP in it? Or was this just related to the comments made at the work session last week?
Both.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
This is Blaine Dunn's big push.
Not just his.
I know, it's not just him, but he's the one that voices it. They would like to remove that aspect of it. But I say, too, that while we do have a job to mind our pennies and dimes, our nickels and dimes, it's also the responsibility of us to provide a needs-based budget, which is what we're doing. And it's also the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors to find the money and pay for it. It's not necessarily our idea to make their job, our job to make their jobs easier. I don't think our job is to make their job easier. I think our job is to figure out what we need to take care of our students, take care of our staff, and in my opinion, I believe that the CEP is a big part of that. And I'm disappointed that we're even discussing this, to be quite frank.
Well, in my opinion, it's a needs-based budget, and this is not something that we need.
Right, and we disagree.
And we disagree, and that's okay.
Yep.
I just want to add a point of clarification. You're correct in remembering that CEP was a $2.2 million price tag, but that was to implement it for all schools, and that's what we did not do.
Okay.
So there wouldn't be $2 million to cut from our budget by eliminating the nine CEP schools.
So I think it was 1.1, was it 1.1? I'm getting, there's a 0.1 there. It was 1.1 million is the current, 1.1 million is the current cost at nine facilities, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But all of that, all of that additional cost wasn't just to maintain the CEP schools, to help run the program.
Got it. Thank you.
And this operates under the assumption that we, the state matching may change, because if they expand their program or change that threshold, then the local match formula could be different.
Well, there is no local match.
There's no local match.
So what I was saying earlier is, there was conversations about how the state was going to fund this.
Okay, got it.
And our speculation was, is that they would do some sort of match, that they would use the LCI match and say, we'll give you this, and a locality has to spend this. Because right now, it comes from our locality, and if you recall, we get reimbursement from the federal government, so we have to front that money on the front end, because of the money that we're not getting from purchasing of meals. Hopefully, that helps clarify that question.
Very much.
Yeah.
Sorry for dropping that grenade. That took 25 minutes to resolve, but since this is a timely issue, I wanted to make sure it was brought up. So, thank you.
All right. So we'll move forward, but please...
Drive on.
Okay. Other things that we heard from our finance committee meetings was the discussion of going ahead and implementing our replacement, our full replacement schedule for our buses. If you remember, 13 is what it takes annually. So we had requested two. It was suggested to bring it up to four, and that would get us to the 13 for the year. And then, there was also some discussion around the technology request, so that you'll see that we did an adjustment here to talk about, as well as we had a board member wanted to know what CEP would look like for all of our schools. So we'll get into that conversation as well.
That would be me.
Yeah. So, again, just to reiterate, the funds that we're talking about, operating debt service and capital projects at this point in the process. And just a reminder that we did comb through our departmental budgets, as well as our schools, and were able to reallocate $650,000 in savings from the current-year budget. That was mostly through our administration and support departments.
I just want to, Mr. Chairman, if I could draw attention to that last slide, and I'll make it quick, I promise. $650,000 is an extraordinary amount of money, and I realize that it pales in comparison to our entire budget. The reason I wanted to call it out is that without being... The reason I wanted to call it out is that without being, without being told we have to cut this specific amount, or we found this one thing that's wasteful, our accountants, our really professional accounting folks, under Dr. Hummer's direction, went through and found over a half a million dollars of taxpayer money and said, we could spend this in a better way. I don't want to hear any more about magnets and all-in Virginia funds. I don't want to hear any more about magnets. That's over a half a million dollars.
Hey, I didn't get one.
I didn't either.
All right, so this gets us into the compensation initiative that was proposed by Dr. Hummer. So there you can see on the screen the pay scale averages as were proposed. So I'm just going to give you a minute to get those percentages back in your, in front of you. And on the next slide, this is where the conversation comes into play about the teacher's pay scale, going back to the various scenarios that we looked at. And if the board wanted to go with the option of where we break the years of experience cluster earlier in the scale, it would change that initiative for teachers to a scale average of 5.6%. So when you look at the components that make up the teacher pay recommendation here at the 4.9, which is where we had the years of experience cluster broken at 16 years of experience for next year. Still able to accomplish our salary goals of at minimum a 2.5 cost of living adjustment, 3% add-on to get to the state initiative, and then increase the start to $54,000 for the teacher's scale. But if the board would want to go with the other teacher option, as you can see here on this screen, to that 5.6% average, it adds about $832,000 to the budget proposal. So this might be a good point in the presentation to talk about.
Oh, no.
I do have one question. When we're talking about the declustering of the teachers, what was, what was the reasoning to focus on the lower end of the 0 to 5, or whatever it was, as opposed to those that are in the middle? What was, what was the reasoning?
I brought that up at one of the meetings, the finance committee meeting. And the reason I said that was getting those teachers in at the lower end. Their cost of living is a lot higher, and it attracts teachers to our community. And when they build those roots, hopefully, they'll stay within our community. And I know, talking with some of the younger teachers out there, they are having, you know, trouble as far as, you know, when they pay the rent, groceries, everything else. I think you guys broke it down for us at the board retreat or on one of our other presentations, where they've got like 10 bucks in their pocket at the end of the month, and it's like, wow. So, you know, it's hard to attract and retain good teachers at that low level. And I think this might bring a little relief. I know it is a little bit more to do it, but I think in the long run, if we invest in those younger years, it'll, it'll bring those folks in.
Mr. Chairman, so, and this is my, probably one of the only times that Miles and I are differing a little bit on a budget idea in that when we had these very preliminary discussions, one of the things that jumped out at me was the gap where we start losing folks. And at, at the 15-year range, we're talking about teachers in their stride, who are still actively involved in professional development and are high-performing folks. We're getting ready to open a fourth high school. And I would like to think that we're going to want some of those experienced folks to help us open that building. And while I see very much that that, those early years teaching, trust me, I've been there. Mr. Bell and I can both tell you, we've been there, right? Those first few years teaching aren't easy. But if we have to choose between which of these groups that we're going to break up in terms of a cluster, I don't want to lose anybody, but I especially don't want to lose some of our most effective and impactful teachers. And that was, that was the reason that I originally brought that up before the budget process started.
And I understand that. And my thought process behind it isn't to put one group against the other at all. You know, and yeah, I think that there is something to be said about experience. But when going through some of the Personnel Committee meetings, I believe, and I could be wrong, but I got the expert here, we lose more teachers at the one- to three-year mark, do we not? So I think that would help shore up the gap right there as well. Additionally, you know, not saying that teachers with more experience aren't as effective, but there is something to also be said about somebody coming in fresh off their feet, or fresh on their feet, you know, and still have a lot of spring in their step. Not saying that the other ones don't. But you know how sometimes at work you see people that do get kind of burnt out. Not saying that they're all burnt out at that, that step, but you have somebody in there that's fresh into it, you know? And wanting those people to stay in that profession, you know, we see people leaving the, not only just our schools, but the teaching profession as a whole. And the biggest thing that's cited is pay.
And just, Mr. Chairman, and I want to point this out only because I know it's not something that everybody lives and breathes in terms of like teacher attrition and reasons for losing, leaving the profession. Over half of teachers don't come back for year two. That, some of it has to do with pay, but that, that strikes equally in very high-paying locales. New York City, Northern Virginia, those places also have an extraordinary attrition rate after the first year or two. So yes, some of it's money, but I also don't want to give the false impression that somehow if we paid everybody 80 grand their first year, they'd stay, because they don't. Teaching is not for everyone. It's, those first couple of years are demanding at best.
I think you're both right. You're absolutely both right. We need, we need both. We need both.
We do.
We can't afford both. But here's the thing that we also have to remember. This is just for this year. The new high school's not going to be built for four more years. So we have another budget next year, and then we have another budget after that. So we'll be declustering these things each and every budget cycle. So I think we should look at which one of these is going to benefit us the most now for this year versus long-term. Because again, we will be able to decluster in the future, and it won't be such a cluster.
Yeah.
Right now. Ms. Anderson, I think on the next slide, you have the pay scales. Is that your next slide?
No.
Oh, it's not? Okay. I pulled up, so I'm looking at the scales because I need, I'm very visual. I got to see these numbers. So this, the slide number 10 that you have currently right up here, does this apply to the E scale, the D scale, or the A scale?
It's the E scale.
This is the E scale?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this is the scale that we decluster early. This is the Atkins scale, if you will.
It is the Atkins scale.
Okay, this is the Atkins scale. The Erskine scale is.
The A scale?
Is the A scale.
A scale, yes.
So the A and the E on our names are backwards.
Right, got it, got it. So the E scale is the one on slide 10, the $6,286,552. And the A scale, can you go back your previous slide, slide nine? That's the A scale.
Scale A, mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me just look here. So 11.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So we've got 5.4, and then we have 6.2. Okay. So to Mr. Bell's point, he's got a good point. Fourth high school's going to be in four years. What I, what's kind of been brought to my attention, I had a really great teacher email me. I think she emailed all of us, and she brought up a really great point. And this is, I'll give my public service announcement here. I love getting the feedback from teachers and from constituents as to where their heads are because it gives me a better perspective of what everyone thinks. And it also gives me some aha moments of, okay, that's a great point. And this teacher is one of our 15- to 16-year teachers. She's the, she's been here, and to her point, she and her cadre have been the stalwarts in the community as far as maintaining the status quo. They keep on keeping on, and they're the, they are the engines, if you will, of our teacher workforce. They're the ones that are tasked with all the committee assignments, which I want to find out more about that because it seems like mandatory fun that our teachers shouldn't have to deal with. So I want to learn more for another meeting. But mandatory committee assignments takes away time from our students and time from their planning. So perhaps I can get an education at a different time about what that entails. But she did bring that up. She said, we're the ones that get the committee assignments because we have experience. We're the ones that get the department heads, and then they get overlooked every year when budget cycle comes around because we are focused on getting the new teachers, and then we're focused on retaining our 25-plus-year teachers. So all of this to say that I want both of these, but which one do we pick for this year? Because clearly, we're not going to be able to do both this year.
That's why I brought up, why I brought up, because I get the same email from the same constituent.
And she's not wrong.
I've got to agree with her.
She's 100% correct.
I agree with her. Do you want to bring up your idea?
Bring up your idea. It's fine.
This is the Erskine plan.
Oh, boy. In the hypothetical, if you like this idea, it's mine. If it's terrible, it was Miles. The, just kidding. If we were to move forward without CEP and preschool, how much money is that?
Again, the CEP answer is going to take a bit more time to give you an accurate answer. But the VPI, the local share of that is about $303,000.
Okay.
So we, we're still shy of.
Oh, by a lot.
Not really. Not by much.
This is why I appreciate these work sessions so much because.
We can scratch the noodles.
It's the whole 10 of them, yep.
Minus five, four, five, four, five, four. Two, four, seven. So we need $832,305. Does that sound right to do both? If we could do both, if we could do option A and option E and implement them this year, we would need to find $832,305. Sorry. All this is, I usually come a little more prepared, but this is, seeing as how we have to approve this tonight in theory, which I don't think is going to happen, Dr. Hummer, sorry, but I'm bringing it to you now.
Yeah. The $832,000 is to get from scale A to scale E.
Okay.
So to do both, it's going to be more than the $832,000.
Can we find out how much more?
Yes.
Okay.
Could it be around 1.1?
Yeah, could it be around 1.1?
Well, even, even if, taking, taking CEP from the nine schools is not a $1.1 million savings. It may be half of that.
Okay.
We just need some time to run the model.
Run the model. Okay, fair. Fair. Thank you.
Ready to move along?
Okay. Yeah.
So there, there's no adjustment to the classified group. Remember, this, these are our bus drivers. These are instructional assistants, our administrative assistants, our maintenance technicians, mechanics. So there in the proposal was a 5.6% pay scale average increase. And you can see how that is made up by the three components. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the next group. The other professionals, a 4.4% pay scale average, again, to meet our salary goals. These are our information technology professionals, our speech pathologists, physical and occupational therapists, as well as athletic trainers. Like the other proposals, a minimum of a 2.5% for a cost of living adjustment, a 0.5 to add-on to get to the 3% state, and again, an unclustering of year of experience. So that's what that proposal is. No change there. And no change for the administrators, supervisors, and coordinators from what was originally proposed of a 3.4% pay scale average. So if there are no questions, I'll move on to the next part. To further talk about your goal of a compensation package, remember the proposal has to move the instructional and bus assistants up a pay grade to better align with the responsibilities that these positions have, as well as address vacancies for these positions. The school security officers, again, which are not the same as a school resource officer, but the recommendation is to move that pay scale up two grades, or a few grades because of the outcome of the salary survey. And as well as, the recommendation is to repurpose our middle school lead teachers to dean of students. So I'll pause here in case there's any questions or discussion on these items.
So we, the other day, we, and Dr. Hummer, you probably be able to answer this better, and I'm still not entirely clear. So the middle school lead teachers going to dean of students, I thought that was just essentially a change in name, change in responsibility, adjusting the role.
Months.
Oh, and that's where that increases. Okay, I was wondering where that came from. Okay. That makes sense from 10 to 12. Okay.
So continuing on compensation, here for special education, our Level 2 teachers and instructional assistants, these are the staff who are leading our learning centers across our schools. So the recommendation here is that the teachers receive $3,000 more than our other teachers, and instructional assistants, $1,000 more. This would create a different pay scale for these jobs. And I'll pause here in case there's any questions.
Just for clarification, Level 2 teachers, special ed?
Correct.
Yep, okay.
So then this gets into the instructional initiatives, school board priorities, which takes us into the second year of phasing in our staffing standards. So here you can see that based on the staffing standards and collaborating with our administrators, the proposal came up with 50 full-time equivalent positions, but the proposal proposes to reallocate 10 of our existing positions to get to a net increase of 40 full-time equivalent positions, as you can see here. The ELL teachers are compliance-related. And I'll pause here to see if there's any questions about the positions in this table.
So the compliance positions, we have to fill regardless. That's the law. Is that correct?
It is based upon standards of quality because standards of quality, the state revise the funding ratio for ELL teachers, yes.
And if we don't, what happens?
We can lose the funding for those particular positions.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we do. I'm just curious as to what happens so that we know, we don't muck with it.
Correct, and that's why we delineated on there the compliance piece, because if we are out of compliance with that, we can lose money. The others, if there was some additional cuts, we would have to make based on the money we get from the county. We would kind of afford to lose those, but we would advise not to lose the ELL teachers.
So we're really asking for 32. That's our ask. I mean, yes, we're asking for 40, but eight of them have to happen.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
We ready to move on?
I just got a question. Being that it's compliance, we say we put it out for those eight positions, and we can't fill them. Are we, do we lose the funding then?
No, because we've allocated money for those FTEs.
Okay, so, so just as long as we're trying to do it.
Correct.
All right, because I'm like Mr. Bell, I think we need it.
Yeah, good question.
But, you know, if, if we can't fill it, you know, and I don't want to just throw somebody in there and say, hey, you're an ELL teacher, and they don't even speak any second language, you know, that kind of defeat the purpose.
Oh, I've worked with someone who was a Spanish teacher and didn't speak Spanish.
That doesn't make sense.
I don't know what you're saying.
All right, that's all I had. Sorry.
Ready to move on?
Okay.
So our share of INREP is, you know what INREP is, what it serves. It has both a school age and an early childhood component. It's shared by the three school divisions that. It's shared by the three school divisions that you see there. But the early childhood component currently is shared between Frederick and Winchester City. Winchester City is pulling out of the early childhood component next year. So because a greater percentage of our students will be served at INREP, our share of the program is increasing by just over 700,000 for next year. So next, we take into the instructional department request of 250,000, which is made up of a data management system, curriculum development, and professional learning. And I'll pause here in case there are any questions for Mrs. Knight.
As far as curriculum development, people are going to hear that, and I've got the same question. We're developing curriculum all the time, and something's always changing. But, and I know there's new ways to teach and there's new stuff to learn. But somebody's going to come back and say, 2 plus 2 is still 4. Why are we, why are we going and putting money into curriculum when a lot of stuff doesn't change? You know, H2O is still water, so that's science and math covered. English is still English. Why are we putting money into that?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Atkins. And I agree with you, the content doesn't change, but the methodologies do. The approaches to instruction to meet today's student needs do. And the expectation from the state that we provide and use high-quality instructional materials is required.
Mm-hmm. So as far as materials go, we talked, I brought this up the other day with the Chromebooks.
Yes, sir.
Does that, are we saying that just because a math book or a science book is dated, the content's still good? The methodology of teacher might change, but why would the learning material have to change? I got you.
Thank you. To some degree, much of that content might very well still be good. But it's not just the content that's in the book, right? And there are, especially with today's children and publishers, there are digital pieces that associate that, that bring learning to life and make the content more interactive. To be able to keep up with children and their level of stimulation, bringing a book, kind of dusting it off at this point from a decade ago, it's like putting a worksheet in front of students. So the expectation is that high-quality instructional materials are interactive and engage students on a deeper level. So that, I mean, try to, I'll make it simple. To unlock learning, you need a different type of learning experience. And those materials, inasmuch as the teacher who uses them, are equally important. Where research prior to this didn't reflect that. So we have to keep up to date and current as well as the standards change. And so by updating our instructional resources to include our textbooks, it weaves in the content from the new standards.
I understand that. And, and I'm sorry, it feels like I'm berating you on this.
Yeah, that's okay.
But if I look back, let's say, 20 years ago, and look at the SOLs and all the test data from 20 years ago, if that was higher then, and it's lower now, people are going to say, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And we keep trying to fix it, and we keep throwing money at it, and our test scores are going down. So it's hard for myself and a lot of community members to buy into that. Changing the way we teach all the time is a, is a necessary development. I'm not saying, you know, that we should go back to, you know, using abacus's or anything like that. But, you know, I think, I think just throwing money at it isn't the, the right answer.
Yeah.
But I, I think what you're doing with developing the curriculum and everything since you've got here is really been wonderful. I just want to see how we can do that without having to dump a bunch of money into new programs. I know when I was on the Instruction Committee, we'd always have somebody coming up, well, you know, this study shows this, and this does that, and, well, great, you know. But the latest and greatest was two years ago when now you're asking me for another science book.
Yeah.
So stuff like that, it's just hard for the community to swallow.
I understand.
If I, Mr. Chairman, if I could kind of frame it up, Mr. Atkins, I hear you long and clear. And as I've voiced to you, Ms. Knight, I love my old-school learning. But at the same time, we are still beholding to the institutions that our students matriculate to, whether it's the United States military, whether it's college, or whether it's a tech school. So, and from what I have seen from you, you are very in tune with what those three entities and others, other areas where our students could go, are demanding. And it's my understanding that colleges and universities, tech schools, and I know the military is demanding technology and kids being fluent on that and up to speed. So the way I see this, Mr. Atkins, is this curriculum development, from what you have just shared with us, is more bringing our kids up to speed with the current technology and the times with which they are going to have to integrate into in the world.
That's correct, Mrs. Klein. And to add to that, it's not just for students. Curriculum is the resource that teachers use to convey learning. And we have new teachers in our midst who do not have access to some of the old documents that were created by previous teachers. And in order to make certain that they have the skills that they need, being able to teach, starting with high-quality instructional materials, is important. And another piece I want to clarify is that I couldn't agree with you more. And in fact, the team and I just talked about that. By team, I'm defining the principals. We just had a full-day principal leadership meeting. And I'm the first to say, I do not believe money is always the answer. I'm never one to throw money at everything because, in fact, I've seen many school districts well-resourced and oftentimes have money left over. But what I want to make certain and we are clear about is that curriculum is not the silver bullet. None of this on this particular slide is the panacea to all of our problems. Student learning and teaching are very complex mechanisms. And they require a number of variables to be in place in order for them to work. This is one component of many that have to be right. This is just the curriculum. If we want to see student achievement, we also have to make sure that we have conditions for students to learn. We have to have conditions for teachers to teach in. All of those are factors, so I don't want to mislead anyone to believe if you spend a quarter million dollars, that achievement is going to soar. It's a quarter million dollars plus everything else we're asking for. And if those variables are not calibrated accurately and effectively, you will not get the results that you want. So the system is designed to get the very, the results that you put in. So if you minimize what you put in, you're going to minimally get what you put out.
Another tool in the toolbox, don't use a hammer as a screwdriver.
You got it.
Got you.
I would like to ask a question. I see that we are infusing the new technology to help and enhance our learning experience with the children. But I myself am still old-fashioned. And when I speak to some of my son's peers, they may have the technological equipment there for them to use and the teachers to utilize it. But when I ask them questions like, you know where the Panama Canal is? Or do they understand what the tariff situation is? It seems like essential elements in life are being overlooked because you're looking to make things more futuristic. To me, a book is something that they can always reference, that is tangible. You have the new laptops, and the money that we put into them, you're more or less utilizing the technology to, say, overpart of the teaching. When if the teacher would interface with the children more personally, I think they would benefit even more. The money that we're spending on all this technology, we seem to be, and as you've heard, worldwide, the United States is 40th in the tier system of education. But we still keep on throwing money at it. I think this is not the answer. I think we need to get back to more basic educational standards.
Mr. Funes, thank you for your perspective, and I support it 100%. Just to clarify, books like this, the Chromebook, this is not additional, right? This is the way children interact with content these days. This is their paper, this is their pencil. Almost no one on this board is likely not have a phone and use that and have regular access to it. So this is how we can bring learning to life, but there is no substitute for a high-quality instructor. So there has to always be a human in the loop. And so if there are experiences where what teachers prescribe or design for students is exclusively on the Chromebook, those are adjustments that we can make in terms of pedagogical experience and exposure. But it wouldn't mean you would throw away the Chromebook. It means you improve how people use the Chromebook to facilitate learning. I think it would be very difficult for us to compete within each district, for our students to stay competitive in the absence of a Chromebook. Again, learning is, in this day and age, it is digital. It is 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And I can't, I would be hard-pressed to find a school district without that. And so I think asking teachers to resume the burden of using paper and copying paper to teach would probably be considered a burden for them. I think it's about changing how they use these devices in order to facilitate learning as opposed to removing them would be one of the things I would think about. And the last point I will make, and I would be happy to provide you the research on this. But the world is changing. And Stanford, one of the Ivies, just did a report, Stanford 2025, if you go onto their website. And they spent a lot of time trying to understand how we catch up with technology because even universities in some cases are under-enrolled. Because the world is changing and students do not see the value in content knowledge, nor do their employers. So when they did a study, over 1,000 Fortune 500 companies have made it very clear, they do not have any value in the content knowledge that students are bringing. They want discipline and skills that students are bringing. They want them to be able to be critical problem solvers and thinkers. They want them to be able to transfer knowledge as team players, collaborators, right? So those are the things that the new-age employers are valuing. And according to them, by 2030, 50% of our jobs are going to be project-based work, not discipline-based work. So therefore, it would be really difficult for our students to rely exclusively on the memorization of facts because everybody has a computer in their pocket. So those are just some thoughts about how we have to evolve with the way the world is moving in order for our students to stay competitive.
Yeah, I'm afraid you're right, unfortunately. Spell check is a good example. People used to know how to spell words. Now, they don't, they don't need to because the computers do it for us. And knowing where the Panama Canal is, which I do know where it is, is just like that. They've got a device in the palm of their hand. If they want to know where the Panama Canal is, they look it up, where is it? They find it, they don't have to memorize it, it's there. It's no different than spell check.
That's right. And I'm not saying I agree with it or disagree with it. It is the state of things.
Yeah.
And students are not memorizing phone numbers. Do you, can anybody on this board point to 10 numbers you remember? Most of us don't because we dial them up quickly. Many people can't get to or from in the absence of their GPS, right? It is the, whether it's an over-reliance or an over-dependence, it is the state of things. And if you want the children in Frederick County to be able to compete for the jobs that either exist today or don't, you will have to contend with the future that has been created for them, and it includes that.
I can remember 10 phone numbers.
Good, I'm trying, I have five.
To your point, and I hate to be flogging a dead horse here, but to your point, I understand where you're coming from, and you're exactly right. But to Mr. Funes's point, and I highly agree with him, we have, we have lost a lot in this country. People don't know history, and I understand, I mean, I can sit here and name every president, boom, boom, bang, just because I've learned it. But we've lost a lot in this nation. People don't understand civics, people don't understand common things these days like they used to. And so he has a valid point, and I understand the technology issue.
And I think we can do both, that's the beauty of this, right? So I don't think we dismiss the fact that all of our students need foundational knowledge, right? You live in this country, there are things you are expected to know. But I think somehow we have to make sure that they can do both.
Let's drive on.
Okay.
All right, so we'll move on to the next slide. This is just a reminder that our budget for next year includes the annual lease for 10 additional modulars at Middletown Elementary School for 175,000. And then the budget proposal also includes $124,200 to address safety and security. This allows us to continue the equipment purchase to secure our facilities as well as a leadership upgrade for the leadership of safety and security for our division. And then transportation, here's where we adjusted based upon information that we heard during the Finance Committee. So this includes 600,000 to get four replacement buses, which gets us up to 13 replacement buses annually.
I have a question about the buses. I heard talk about endeavoring to explore the feasibility of electric buses. At this point, I don't think that would be advantageous. I'm hoping it was put to the side.
That is correct.
Yeah, we live, there's mountains and stuff around here.
Yeah.
But, Mr. Goodwin, I did see an article about hydrogen buses, which go five times the distance as electrical buses do. But it's brand-new, so I don't know if it's even here in the United States. But that would work, given the range in which they blow up.
Thank you for bringing that up. We're always glad to explore new opportunities to use energy. One of the problems with electric buses was the infrastructure we'd have to install and the cost to do that for a small ability to use it here in a very mountainous terrain. So we'll certainly follow up with that, look into hydrogen or other resources. But we've been switching back over to diesel lately, so.
Oh, yeah. I'm just saying, there's other stuff out there, yeah. I do have a quick question. I know it's not on this topic, but we talked about the $650,000 that you guys comb through and found, and I appreciate that. I was just curious, because I'm trying to remember from a previous Building and Grounds Committee meeting, where we decided not to put the trailers up over at Jordan Springs and kind of cut that timeline down. I thought we saved 650 there. For some reason, that number sticks out to me. Is, that's not the same, okay.
Yeah, so those are, those were unobligated dollars. So those are one-time costs that we would have to determine where we're going to spend that money. We're still currently looking into that in regards to how we want to spend that money. We're also having the next Buildings and Grounds meeting. We're looking at adding modulars potentially at James Wood Middle School as well as Bass Hoover. So we're talking about that in conversations there, as well as some other items that we're looking at spending that money.
Putting those two 650 together would really go a long way to soften the blow on de-clustering or adding that additional space over at Dow J.
Dow J.
Yep, food for thought.
So, and then other items for consideration, technology. We adjusted this down to 75,000 to help support Chromebook refresh cycle. The school nutrition transfer, this 100,000, currently, we transfer a million dollars from the operating fund to the school nutrition fund to help support that operation. Part of that transfer is covering currently $200,000 in unpaid meal balances. Based on that number growing, we are proposing that we increase that transfer to 100,000, expecting our unpaid meal balances to be up to 300,000 next year, which this would help cover that. We did have a board member ask us about what would the additional cost be to implement the community eligibility provision, CEP, at all of our schools. And based upon, there's multiple variables that go into the school nutrition fund, whether it be participation rates and our students participating in the breakfast and lunch program, how that translates into our need for staff, as well as our food costs. So we're seeing our participation increase. We're over 60% participation now, and that's grown since 50% the same time last year. So with all that being said, with CEP, there's a trend that shows our participation increases. So to implement CEP for all of our schools, it would be about a 1.9 million dollar number.
Ms. Anderson, or Mr. Chair, I just want to, kind of a two-part question about this school nutrition piece. Coming at it from a different direction that Ms. Klein and Mr. Bell talked about earlier. Our students, two-part question, are students allowed to matriculate if they have unpaid debt to the school system? debt to the school system?
Yes.
Why?
You want to take, yeah, please?
We weren't allowed to walk across the stage at Sherrando if we had anything more than a dollar balance.
I don't believe that you're allowed to have students not matriculate now based on meal debt.
So, the meal debt is separated out from other types of debt?
It used to be, a long time ago, those kind of things occurred where people couldn't walk, or things like that when they graduated, but almost all states have taken that away.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because if we were to go forward with what Mr. Bell's asking for the CEP, then we're not going to have any unpaid meal balances, because all of the meals are paid for all the time. And so, I guess what I'm wondering is, will we see this as a line item? Or are we just being asked to take it on faith and fund both of these things? I mean, that's $100,000 for the school nutrition transfer, and that doesn't even cover the unpaid balances as they stand now.
Yeah, so a couple of things, if I'm understanding your question correctly, Dr. Erskine, one of the biggest aspects when we came forward with this proposal is, keep in mind, not every student accessed the free breakfast and lunch when we had it for all students during COVID, and we tracked that data. So, and I can't remember the percentage off the top of my head, Ms. Anderson, I don't know if you have that. I want to say it was maybe 40 to 50%. Some of our other schools were a little bit higher, based on their free and reduced population, but I think it came out between an average of 40 or 50%. We'll look into that. So, that's the first thing. So, it's not, that's why when we came forward with that estimate, that is an estimated cost of how much money we will have to put into the operating to overcome the dollars that they're not getting with students purchasing breakfast and lunch.
Okay.
Okay? So, if we did move forward with all 21 sites, you are correct that we would no longer need to have this line item budget here. And it could fluctuate. I mean, based on the reimbursement dollars that we receive from the federal, we could have that fluctuation in regards to how much we have to put in the operating dollars. So, and for the remainder of this year, if we were, say if we were to do CEP this year, it was going to be about $600,000, $700,000 to go for all sites, to do it for this year. And then, in order to do it for the rest of the schools, it was again going to be about $1.9, $2 million, which was going to be a rough estimate. And then, as we've been talking about, we only have nine schools currently, so if we removed that, it's going to be between $500,000 and $1 million, $500,000 and $1 million, based on our speculation with that number, is what we're thinking. So, if I'm understanding you correctly, yes, there would be somewhat of a wash there, but we would have to take a look at how much more we would have to add in every year, and we would have to make that speculation.
And last question, just because I don't have a basis of comparison, is the norm among school systems in our region and school systems of our size to handle unpaid meal balances the way we're handling them? Is that how it's done in most places?
Correct. So, in years past, you were able to go through a collection agency, but per state code, you are not permitted to do that. I know that was a question that came up.
I had that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you're not permitted to do that. However, when we did that, because it did happen, and Ms. Anderson, please chime in here, it was not cost-effective, because you have to pay this third party, there was money that you had to put into that, and then they're still kind of tracking these individuals down, and then there was just no payoff to that. So, then, we went away from that. But there is a code, and I can get you that exact number, that clearly says that you should not go out to a third-party collection agency to collect debt for students. So, and that's where we currently are. Yeah.
Dr. Hummer, I did look, and it was a House bill that prohibits school, actually, school boards from having policies that exclude students from extracurricular activities based on student meal debt.
I don't think we should punish the students for sure, but we should hold the parents' feet accountable, but apparently, we can't do that.
Yeah, well, no, no, we still do. I mean, we still reach out to these parents to get them to pay the money back, and we still stay after them, but to go to a collection agency, that's not something that we're permitted to do.
If I didn't pay my taxes to Frederick County, they would send me to a collection agency and recoup those taxes. Like, this is, to me, this is the same thing. You're using, you're abusing public money, anyway. I digress.
You could move to Montana.
I could, you're right.
Also, one thing to remember is, when you use a debt collection service, you get pennies on the dollar, maybe 10 cents if you're lucky.
Yeah.
So, we're not talking about getting all the money back, so...
Which is very unfortunate. It's above our pay grades on this board, but there needs to be some reform there. So, when you run for Congress, Dr. Erskine, you change it.
We'll add that to our lobbying trip for next year.
And then, the last thing on the slide, we have the human capital management system of $400,000 requests that Mrs. Sprigley is here, if you have any questions.
I'm excited about this one. I think this is necessary. It's a big-dollar figure, but gosh, do we need it. I think it'll cure a lot of ills and streamline things. Big cost upfront, long-term money savings, so thank you.
It will save a lot.
I share in your excitement as well.
All right, so, based upon the original proposal, which is what Dr. Hummer presented to you in January, you can see here on this slide how it would be funded. The state revenue estimate here, I need to say, is based on the governor's proposal. As soon as we hear more from the state, we believe that the General Assembly will conclude by the end of this week, so we should have some more information there regarding the state proposal. And then, the county transfer being the other larger number on the screen. But we talked about some adjustments, including the teacher pay scale adjustment, the adjustment to technology, and the adjustment to buses. So, there you can see what those adjustments do to the amount that we would be requesting from the county. But also heard tonight that there's some other items that the board wants to consider in the proposal that gets sent downtown. So, real quickly, just want to remind you about the debt service fund. We're going to need $1.525 million more from the county next year to pay our debt obligations. And then, what we're requesting for the capital projects fund, here, you can see the first table of our priorities for our facilities. These items are listed in priority order.
Can you go back, please?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin, the fire protection system in Millbrook and James Wood, I assume, is within code now.
Yes, correct. Those need to be replaced based on those schedules, so that's why those, again, any kind of safety system is what's first on our top priority, but it's due to be replaced.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And you'll notice the original year requested column there. So, last year, I think our request was just over 19 million, and the Board of Supervisors provided us $3 million towards those projects, as well as we had some of our surplus operating funds that got re-appropriated. So, if a project doesn't get funded, it just rolls to the next-year request.
Got a question about that. So, back with the James Wood electoral lighting, the LED retrofit. It's, so, that's coming up this year, 2025. We just retrofitted the whole school, like...
This is the middle school.
Oh, wrong one.
Yeah, James Wood Middle School.
I'm, never mind, not thinking high school. It's like, why would this be on there?
That building over there that Dwight D. Eisenhower went to.
We worked really hard to update this list, so I'm glad that you discovered that.
I was like, whoa, I didn't see that in Building and Grounds.
They look like my steps.
Ready to move on? All right. So, just some upcoming events, the February 11th Budget Town Hall has been moved to the 20th, and then, we have the Budget Town Hall at Millbrook tomorrow evening, and Sherrando on the 26th.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, and this is for the board, thank you, Mrs. Anderson and the team for that. So, this was on the docket for this evening for you to adopt, and there's two phases to this, as we've spoke about. So, you adopt in February or by April 1st, and then you approve in April, once the Board of Supervisors approve what the appropriation is going to be. I can talk to the county in regards to when the very last day is that they actually need our budget, because they have to advertise. So, per the state code, it's April 1st, but they usually like to have that a little bit earlier. Our next board meeting is March 18th, but if we feel that we can get these numbers in, which I'm going to go ahead and confidently say that, yes, we can, if we want to maybe look at a consensus of holding another budget meeting next Tuesday, have a special-called meeting for you to adopt the budget, I think that will give the county enough time, because they have to advertise the tax rate, they have to advertise the appropriation. So, if you all can confirm that, and I'm just going to make a recommendation, we just have a special-called meeting. I don't think we need a work session again. I think we've talked through most of what we need to discuss, totally up to you guys.
Do we have to vote on that?
No, consensus.
It's fine.
So, if we could do 7 o'clock next Tuesday?
Do a little earlier?
6 o'clock? 6 o'clock? Okay. I was just doing 7, because that's usually our meeting, 6 o'clock?
What's the date?
Next Tuesday, February 25th? 8 plus 7 is 5, yeah. 25th.
I don't consent, but that's okay, there's more of them than me.
Okay.
Would you want an earlier time?
No, I want to pass the budget now.
Oh, no, no. We still got to figure out this pay scale stuff.
All right, that's the consensus then.
Okay. All right, 6 o'clock next Tuesday. We'll advertise that and get it posted by Thursday. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any board member comments? Hearing none?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to close this meeting.
Hang on one second, brother. Next school board meeting's February 18th at 1900 hours, which would be here in just a few hours. Now, can I have a recommendation?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion to end the meeting.
Second.
My motion to adjourn has been properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?